When you're ready and then counsel, we thought the way we do it this evening is I'll start with Frank and if you have individual questions about the budget that was presented last time or any comments or anything will do that individually so that staff can address that. And we can either you can ask by departments or just Aaron in general, however you'd like. So when you guys are ready, we'll go ahead and get started.
And then do we have near pro tem case? Okay, all right, and so we just have support slides in case folks want to go over things again, or we've heard a few questions that may come up, and so we had a little bit of preparation, but really tonight is just like the mayor said, if you have questions, if you have comments, recommended changes, I think the idea would be that if there's something you would like to change in the budget, we would have a consensus of four of you and we would make that change. We would whatever the outcome is at the end of the evening, we would make those changes in the budget. We'd come back on November 17th with the initial posting for the various budget ordinances, hopefully, and then we would have on December 1st, the public hearing for the budget. With that.
And just quickly, Sarah Kelly saying there's no sound for her.
It's all good now. Thanks, Hillary.
Okay, great. And Councilor Case, just remember, if I forget you say something.
Thank, thank you. I'm not afraid to interrupt, but I'll be respectful. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so. Rusty, do you have your hand up?
No, I'm trying to get her attention to promote me to a panel.
Oh, okay. Aaron, are you guys ready for questions or did you want to?
Ready?
Yeah, I didn't have anything further, Aaron. I don't know if you wanted to make any comments or just get into it.
No, yeah, if we want to just go council member by council member, that would be great.
Councilmember Connors, do you have any questions or comments you'd like to make?
I had them answered last time, but I know that Councilmember Ott has a couple that I'm interested in those answers. Thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Nakai.
No, the one question I had was answered, so I'm good.
Very good. Councilmember Neil.
I'm going to frame it as a question then. One of the things that I had made a promise last year, and I've started to tell some of the council members was to throw out the idea of a temporary mill levy reduction because I've heard it by a lot of council members and I've heard it past council members, I've heard it from citizens. The question, so that we can get the information in front of people is what is the effect? The average effect on an average citizen in Woodland Park? If the council entertained a temporary mill levy reduction of point two five? And I believe that Aaron is prepared to show a slide that would kind of guide. It would provide an answer to my question and it would help with the discussion.
Absolutely. So this is an example of a tax bill from Teller County. It breaks down all of the different taxing taxing districts that we have.
Excuse me, Aaron. Sarah, we don't have a picture on this side.
Oh.
Where the council members are closest.
If you use your imagination.
Yeah.
It says just no signal.
Recording in progress.
Here is.
You standing up there saying it loud or it's not going to make it any better.
Mayor, we cannot hear who's speaking online.
Well, right now no one's speaking because they're having technical difficulties with the TV.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'm just curious. So Rusty, can you, when you asked the rest of your question, can you clarify why you're saying temporary install?
We're still working on it.
Okay, I will. I will. Why your thinking is going.
Thank you.
And why only?
Counsel, we're going to print out copies for you. It's going to just take one minute.
All right, Aaron, you don't need to print one for me. I can see it.
I had discussed last year without, you know, when he was trying for, I think he went with the point seven five, if I remember correctly, last year.
Two years ago.
Two years ago, yeah, point seven five. And he and I had talked about this point two five is what I was hung up.
Right now the mill rate levy is how much?
Fifteen points.
Fifteen points.
And I recommended a one point seven five decrease.
Mayor.
Yes.
While they're working the technical, there was a question of me to explain why I said a temporary mill levy.
Sure.
Okay.
Just give him, just give us a second. Yes.
It went away. Yeah, whatever you did, whatever you did. Yeah, well, the HDMI thing came up again, so there it is.
We can probably just see my one.
It's on both.
Thanks.
Leave that. That works for us. There's nobody else on that side in the audience.
Okay, Rusty, so if you want to repeat the question. Yes. And oh, Sarah, are you recording us yet? Oh, okay. Good. Okay, fine.
Okay, the rationale, the question was why I wanted to discuss a temporary mill levy reduction versus just a permanent mill levy. And it's the way our laws are written that if you do a permanent reduction to go back up to it, it would take a ballot initiative. In other words, the citizens would have to vote to bring it back up. Whereas a temporary one, we can look at our projected budget each year to see if we have like a windfall. We have a nice windfall this year. The citizens supported the council's decision in 2022 to pay off the memorial park debt. And as a result of paying it off in 2022, starting in 2023, this budget, we get approximately $267,000 that we can play with this year that we wouldn't have. Plus, we have that $700,000 one time dollar amount that comes into us. So it's almost a million dollars more to look at. And in my mind and listening to the citizens, if we can provide some tax relief because Woodland Park is very much against taxes and oversight and stuff. So if we do a temporary, that year, we know we have this a pretty solid handle that that's going to be here. And then if next year we go into a recession and everything falls off the plate because it wasn't permanent, it goes back to what it was. And then next year at budget time, we can decide whether we want to make another temporary or a permanent or whatever. It just how to use some windfall money to help out the citizens. When you see how little it is, I'm not going to judge what's, and I don't want to steal the sun thunder, but what $7 per year does to a family? Because there are some that may be important. But at least it's a dialogue to show that we have heard the citizens. Ms. Betterman provided the reminder last council meeting and I remembered my promise to do this. So that's why I'm asking these questions and just open it up for conversation to see what the council thinks. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So on the first page of the handouts that you have, I have an example here of a tax bill on a property that has an actual value of 411,000 and an assessed value of $29,430. And you can see that on the tax bill, we have all the taxing jurisdictions that we have. So we have Teller County, the school district, City of Woodland Park, county fire, library. On this one, it has the South Platte Water Conservation District, and then also the Uptown Regional, and it comes out to a total of 80.857 mills down at the bottom. And of that 80.857 mills, the city of Woodland Park makes up five, 15.75 of the total, which is 19.48% of the total tax bill. And so on this one, on the assessed value of 29,430, the total tax bill is 22,379, of which $463.52 goes to the city of Woodland Park. So if we move to the next page on the handout, you can see what each reduction in the mill would would actually equate to for the taxpayer. So in this instance, if you did a point two five reduction in the mill levy, sorry, I got to move my Zoom screen here, it's going to be $7.36 would be the annual savings for that taxpayer.
Where are you seeing that?
On the second page, it's the right on the top.
Over the back. Okay.
Okay, and then what that would cost to the city on the next slide. A point two five reduction, the mill levy for the city would cost $32,725 in property tax revenue for the city. Are there any questions on that?
I do not have any questions. Thank you, Aaron, for giving us that data. Just to kind of mull over that the tutorial I kind of got from that was a small change produces at the taxpayer is really a very small amount that goes into their wallet. But it's magnified at the city end where you take the red, the total number of households times that $7 and it can start becoming a very large dent in our budget. And I don't want to do too much damage because we do have a kind of a large list of desires that we did receive in this budget that I'm sure we're going to be debating over. And I just do want to make this a, an item that, you know, we fight over. Talking about, thank you very much.
Can I just comment on that from last year? So last year I proposed a one point, 1.75 mil reduction, which it looks like it's about 130 grand. And I think the comments at the time were that we have too much debt and it wasn't the right time to do it. So what I want to build, build on what you're saying is government will always spend everything you give them. That's like, that's pretty general. So we do have some debts that we're trying to knock off, so I'm supportive of looking at that at that down the road. I like your temporary idea. It gives us some flexibility for sure. But I well, I'll talk about it when I get to in terms of debt reduction. So very good. Thank you, Rusty. That was awesome.
That was my only question I had, Mayor.
Councilmember Odd.
Now, so I was looking at this for that $15,000 for events. So is there a plan for that? Or is that, is there going to be a process to use that money? How's that going to be? How would that be used? And why was it $15,000 exactly?
I've heard Michael. So if I could address that, as I recall, it was Mayor Pro Tem who had brought up that idea we talked about. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor Pro Tem, but the salute to American Veterans Rally had made a request and we brought that up at one of the, excuse me, previous budget workshops. And I think the conversation among the council evolved to, well, how about something of a revolving, basically grant fund for signature events? And it seemed like the consent, the council gave consensus at that time to do, to go down that path. I, I worked with Grace and Grace came up with a couple of examples of what kind of an objective process would look like for choosing which events would qualify for dispersments from that fund. There would be a number of cities do that. I think we pulled Colorado Springs, we pulled Fremont County. My previous city did something similar where you have a number of criteria. Are you bringing in people from out of town? Are you, are you, or are you serving people who are just local? What time of year is it? Are you benefiting certain groups of people within the community? And then you get certain point levels. And if you rise above a certain point level, then you qualify for a disbursement. If you don't, you have a nice community event, but you don't qualify for grant funding. So we would, if the council wanted to preserve that, we would go down the road of developing our own process for evaluating events that applied. And then I think we had that the council approves it ultimately. So, sorry, I kind of, I kind of took it right from your grace. My apologies. Is there anything else you would add to that?
I don't, sorry, I don't think so, but it would definitely be something we'd have to, there would, we'd have to really work through what the process would look like. And we did, I think we did talk about council being the approving authority, but having some sort of application process for you all to review would be important. So we would look at all the other jurisdictions and then like we talked about doing an inventory of how we currently support events. So we do in kind for a lot of events in our community. So we would kind of do an inventory of how much is that actually costing us now? And then having an objective way to choose which events that you would support with this fund.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of what I'm getting at with the, you know, how much that we know that the one event they're asking for $15,000, but that's one event. So what are this, are we looking at just doing one signature of any year that we're going to pay for? Or are we just, you know, putting this $15,000 in there to give preference to this event? So I want to make sure that we are going to look at doing signature events, then maybe find out what those signature events might be, what they might cost. And then we can get that kind of in the budget to talk about that, to see if $15,000 is too much or enough. Either way.
If I might, I'd like to, I'd like to weigh in. This is kind of the, the item that I had asked that we look at and talk about as a council and consider. There are several events in our community that, that this is a conversation that actually started back when Val was still our mayor. And we were.
I could fill in the blanks for her.
Yeah, we have.
Kelly, you're frozen.
You're frozen.
Mayor Carr, I'll just fill in the blanks for her. Mayor Carr, we had done away with the community investment program, which was a program that we had where we had a pool of money.
What that was, was a lot of non weren't necessarily cross section of people into our, not only the community, but.
She's just, she's winning it.
Off the chart.
Winning it.
Kelly, I think we missed most of what you said and it kind of paused and then it sped up really fast. So I think we missed it.
Slot machine.
Yeah.
So we did away with the community investment program.
Recording in progress.
At that time, Mayor Carr wanted to institute something where we would do this for signature events. I think that's what she wants to tell you where the roots of this was from.
Right. And then I can fill in sort of too, where we'd had a discussion on council about charity isn't really a council's obligation or what we should be doing with taxpayer dollars.
I hear me now.
We can try, try to let you get back in.
Counsel, can you hear me?
We can now.
Kelly, could I suggest you turn your video off and just go audio?
So anyways, we had the argument that the council shouldn't be doing charity. And how, how is it that we pick them fairly or not? So then the, the signature event was suggested as the events that bring in the most money for charities. And I had suggested as I had other council members that the in kind donations by the city were enough for each of those charities. It was doing a fair way to do it. So we thought, so then Kelly's bringing the signature event back as a recommendation or possibility. And for you guys to discuss that. So are you there still, Kelly, or not?
Hillary, your mic is off.
Oh, great.
We're all winning it tonight.
And the other thing I do have to say is there are internet problems right now. I have the circle of death on mine and so could be what's happening with Kelly as well.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't log in either earlier.
I'm back. Can you hear me?
You're back in business.
Yes, we can.
I'm back. Sorry about that. I don't know what happened. Anyway, what I was saying was that kind of opening that conversation up again. Yes, we did have a request from the rally. There's Symphony Above the Clouds. We've had other events that we've identified as signature events. Those are two that come to mind out of those previous conversations. And I think that the, the 15 is just a placeholder. And, and from, from conversations, there's some ideas that I have that I'd like to share with you, counsel. It's brief to identify events that are important to the community from many different perspectives, not just one or two. And, and the, the term signature event is what came out of that conversation before. And that we would develop as, and as a subcommittee or something, develop qualifying criteria of what that definition is, what that looks like, what a signature event is to our community. And then create an application process with built in reporting accountability, follow up, and that kind of criteria has a really good program in place that they have been using. And it's similar to what I just described. Of course, it's, it would be important.
Any more comments?
Are you done, Kelly? You're frozen.
She's frozen.
What are your thoughts based on what?
I don't know. I mean, my thoughts are, I mean, I'm kind of with the mayor, you know, on this, I think that we're using tax dollars for charity. And if a event wants to be here, well, then we'd like to support them. We, we give them police support, you know, we, it does cost the city some money to do that stuff. And, and I think we're good with that. That is still a cost to us. So I don't know how I'd feel about spending the taxpayers' money to do, you know, charitable events in that way, like to actually pay extra money to someone that might be getting money from that, you know, for a payment for doing the job. That's the difference for me as opposed to us spending money on resources to support events for our, for the citizens, you know.
So I don't think I could express my feelings any better. I'm exactly where you're at. The in kind, dollar amounts that we're providing is really not, well, it is taxpayer dollars. It's just a roundabout way, but it's not a direct to a nonprofit or a group. And how we adjudicate, because we have the farmers market, we've got the veterans rally, we have the symphony above the crowd cloud.
How many of those events do we pay them money to be here though?
None.
None. So this, but we do provide support. We do, it does have a financial cost to the city. Yes. So I feel like I wouldn't want to, you know, allocate taxpayer dollars to signature events in that way. Maybe I'm wrong, but I just, I feel like that we, I think we should support them and, you know, and provide that cost to the city in that way. But I don't think we should pay someone that's collecting any kind of a salary or any kind of anything like that on top of it, because that's, that's you using the taxpayers' money when you you share responsibility not to do stuff like that, to pay somebody for a service at that point. And we're not, it's not a service that, and anybody asked me for it, so.
Yeah, so I would say I totally agree with everybody and attack on that. The in kind, it is taxpayer monies, but it's, it's being used as taxpayers were there at that event. So it's protecting us in a way to some extent.
Yeah.
Services. So it's not a flat up, it's taxpayer money being spent on a nonprofit or whatever event. So it's, so I'm a choose, I have a choose your time thing.
Pay for and their taxes.
And I do, yeah, then I do picking and choosing which event gets the money, not that they're not great events.
I don't really want to be in that business anyway.
And I, I would chime in, agree with you guys. And I would say this, Michael, that with your launch of the economic development, that's really where the focus is. It's to have the business folks create their own enterprise, their own dynamic amongst the business people to generate income because, and I don't know if this is a good time to talk about it, but I took Michael for a walk last week and we walked the, yeah. He didn't even have to go potty.
And he wasn't on a leash, but we did go to the park.
And you made him an offer he did not refuse.
But we went to the park and the point about it is we're providing the park for a lot of these groups who are, we're giving in kind donations to, but I, and we're going to pay it off. It's, I'm very excited. We're going to pay off the park this year or January. But have you guys walked the park? Have you seen the degree of decay that there is in our park? The amount of erosion that there is in the park, the number of, I mean, there's flagstone pieces that the kids skateboard down, they're all ripped out. There's just, there's a lot, and there's two trees that are half dead. There's just a lot of things and maybe at some point, Michael, we could even do a presentation of those photos I gave you.
Yeah, we, we are having, Kip and I talked earlier this week and it all plays into the broader budget theme of addressing deferred maintenance and how do you best repurpose that? Potentially maturing debt service payments and instead of paying debt on an asset, you now want to roll that same money into maintaining that asset.
Oh, good. Oh, wow. Oh, good.
You just said that.
Perfect. So clearly there's a nexus there. Okay, good. If, if I might, while I have the floor for Councilmember Ott's for comments. I would say though, in a number of these examples, we found that one of the criteria is that the dollars invested in an event generate some kind of ROI return on investment from who's ever putting it on. And then that's something that the event promoters or organizers have to demonstrate. I think we saw that with Lart down in the Springs. So that is, that is one consideration that goes into it. That might, maybe that's the biggest one. If you want to talk about economic development and signature events should bring in fresh money from faraway places into Woodland Park. Absolutely. Otherwise, they're not, they're not doing, that's, they're not meeting the mission of a signature event. The other thing I would say is we do want to correct something. We do provide the lighter side of Christmas parade. We do provide $5,000 for that event. I'm told that's a city. uh, the lighter side of Christmas parade. We do provide five thousand dollars for that event. I'm told that's a city event. I didn't know that until recently, um, but the city chartered that some time ago and it's been kind of maybe somewhat on autopilot, but Tracy and her folks do a great job. Anyways, that, that is the one exception. We do provide considerable in-kind um, from the chief spokes and Kip's folks, uh, and a few others as well. So that is a fair, fair observation.
Yeah. So Michael, how do you verify that? I'm, I don't know what the numbers look like from the veterans rally, for example, but um, if somebody new comes and says, I would like to have an event there and it costs money um, where they'd like to be, like it to be a signature event where it's a repetitive annual event, for example. Um, how do you validate that, uh, cost recovery? Like you said, that you would make that ROI, uh, return on investment there, the, uh, principal reason you would bring them? How, how would they prove that?
So that's a good question. I, I don't know if you saw, um, I, it's, uh, I don't know if you obviously can't really verify ahead of time, but I would imagine there's some kind of report that's due following the event and you have to demonstrate that. If you hit the target, great. Come back next year if you don't. Um, thanks, but you, you couldn't do it. So you're off. Uh, that would be my guess. But it's, uh, again, it's a fair point.
I would just be concerned that we do five years of that with different, every time we have a new vendor coming in to do a signature event, it doesn't have, you know, a positive ROI. We just dedicated city resources and taxpayer funds to pay them to be here.
I'd imagine it's like investments. Some of them you're going to win on, some are going to lose on.
Yep.
Do we have a number, Michael, even a ballpark number of what it costs us in in-kind donation, in-kind services for the list of, of signature events the city has? The parade, the.
No, that, that is something, uh, we've talked a little bit about that we need to track better. Um, we, we looked at the veterans rally last year and that was between, I think the three departments involved was about nineteen thousand dollars in in-kind. Um, so you multiply that times the other events and um, you're, you're probably approaching the eighty, hundred thousand dollar mark, I would imagine. And, and a lot of that is over time. Um, we do let lend out some equipment and stuff. And that's not something you see in the numbers, but you know, those, those are assets that we have to replace if they're worn out or run over or something like lost. We get cones stolen a lot. I don't know what that's about, but give them back.
Give them back.
Back. Um, so.
Was council member Case able to participate?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we can.
I'm back. Back. Um, yeah, I, I missed the, the, a lot of the dialogue there, but, um, I, I just, uh, I, I'd like to have the conversation about this type of investment in our community. Um, council always talks about helping the businesses and if there's a reporting and accountability, uh, follow-up for these types of things, then we can hone in on making it better. Um, I, I see it as an investment in our community and in our businesses and in our, our citizens. Um, and, and it, you know, we've got some, I'll tell you that the history of the Symphony Above the Clouds, I serve as their board chair now. Um, we bring anywhere between six and eight thousand people into our community when we don't have a pandemic. Um, and so it's, it's, um, there's a lot to be said about that. So I, I just wanted to ask the council to have that conversation and see what that might look like going forward. Thank you.
Councilmember, are you, do you have more?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
So a purpose of this then is, do we have to, are we going to get a consensus on if we want to have that or not, or is this just to talk about it and move on?
I think, well, I think council member Case was looking for a consensus on it potentially, but I think also you could look at things like if the city can maybe start kind of paying attention to the events that are occurring and what kind of dollars they are bringing in, if that's possible. Something like that, so that we could get an idea of this is something we want to do in the future. And I think council member Case meant she would like to do it now. Um, and whether she would get a consensus for that, I don't know, but, um, but it's open for discussion to come up with new and better ideas or whatever you guys come up with.
Yeah, one of the, uh, thoughts I had was roll it into economic development, not make it council's decision, economic development can decide if its ROI is worth it or whatnot. Um, and I, I too was going to say what you just said, as far as the, uh, maybe we get a rolling, do, do they, how much money do they bring in for the next couple of years and then go back and look at it? And say, maybe it does make sense to have signature event fund separate from economic development. I don't, I don't know, it's.
Catherine, I like that. I like that as well. I think that's, uh, an absolute appropriate place for that to be. And, and really, Mayor, I just, I just wanted to start the conversation to, to invest in our community. That's all. I just, Val hit on a great idea. And I'd be happy to go back and look through my documents and see what that looked like when that was talked about before. Um, and, and Catherine, I think that's, I think that's a brilliant place for it. Thank you for that input. Thanks.
You, you missed Robertson put on it too. He had the same idea.
Thanks, thanks, Robert.
I, I, I do, but I don't. I'm not supportive of putting that money into economic development. I'm into putting that money back into rehabbing the park. I prefer that fifteen thousand dollars go back into the kitty to, to, so that we take care of the park, which is a, is the hosting of the grounds which are getting quite quickly deteriorated. And to me, that's a better allocation of the people's funds than it is to give it directly to some organization, which can work on their own ROI generation. So.
Well, you were recommending the, that it go to economic development.
Well, no, my, my, my suggestion about economic development was that I think that the fact that the city's putting energy into economic development, which is working in synergy with businesses, is a, a valid use of city dollars because that will return over, over time.
Yeah.
I'm still struggling. We haven't got to my comment. I'm still struggling with the idea of putting in three point five new FTEs. But, um, definitely I'm in support of getting the economic development started. Uh, whether we make that an ongoing assumed position, I'm still struggling with that myself. I don't know how, how some of you feel about that. But, um, I'd certainly like to see that kickoff this year, uh, reignite, uh, Main Street. I mean, get Main Street reignite. Not that we're, we're funding it particularly, but get it, maybe it's coming out of it. Is that, I, I miss that, Michael, is it? Do we have an allocated dollar amount for Main Street?
And then just. Believe it's still, I don't believe we've touched it. I think it's in there.
Or not yet.
Yeah. Yeah, you kind of, you kind of hit on it there a little bit, but I was just wondering and just for my education here. So the lodging tax, we have your, want to use the lodging tax for two FTEs for economic development. Do we need another department created in the government to do this? Um, and I, and I'm asking the question, I'm not, you know, I don't want to pit about it, I'm just asking. And then, um, can that be done in the other way than rather than creating a new ongoing cost? Uh, you know, like, maybe it's contracted out to meet what the goal that you want. And so I don't really know what the goal is, why you would want that. And I just was wanted to ask and find out what your plan was for that.
Sure. No.
Oh, sorry, can I, oh, I just, second part of that too.
Okay.
I thought that the, like the lodging tax was like to beautify, you know, Woodland Park and do that kind of stuff and could probably be used for things like fixing the park and making things nicer or whatever. So is that the best use for that tax?
I have a couple of different thoughts for that. I'm going to go to the one you just said, so I don't forget it. Um, I can't, uh, I can't remember what section of city code it's in, but when we gave the presentation on economic development on September first, we actually cited that section of the code and, uh, it actually speaks to economic developments, um, and beautification. Uh, that lodging tax dollars and it's explicit in that language. And I, if, if you gave me a minute, I could probably pull it up. But, um, I would say that it is absolutely within, that an economic development function is absolutely within uh, the scope of use of lodging tax. Beautification is as well. Um, so it's, it, it is all those things. To, to the other question about structure, I, I've, you know, you and I had talked about this a little bit a, a week or so ago and been looking around, asking some folks, researching. And, uh, I have not seen, um, in my time in government, an outsourced economic development function. So not to say there isn't one or that you couldn't, but, um, what, what I was reminded of yesterday, uh, going, going back to the comprehensive plan, which, uh, we predicated the entire economic development function on. There's a whole chapter in here on economic development and tourism. You read through it, there's thirty-two different action items in there. Um, and it's kind of longitudinal in scope. Some of them, uh, some of these action items take six years or more to accomplish. Um, a consultant in theory could do just about any one of those things. Some of them would be pretty hard. But taken together, if you want to make a serious event in a lot of these things, it would be very helpful to have one who's on, on the ground, on the staff, who's available in the community anytime, is available on short notice to go to meetings to, to literally pound the pavement and go door, door to door and meet with businesses. Um, so much of economic development is building relationships and trust with the businesses. As council member Zuluaga mentioned, it's really putting the businesses at the center and having that person who's going to be there, uh, to communicate out at the hub to all those different people. So having, having a person who is here on staff as opposed to a consultant who's coming probably from the Springs or from Denver. Um, it, it's, that's going to be that much bigger of a challenge if you were to try and outsource it. If you were to have it for a limited duration, I think it, it totally cuts the legs out from under the concept altogether. Because it is something you never stop doing, economic development. You're always wanting to build on businesses and you build critical mass and get exponential return sort of thing. So, um, you, you could look at contract help. Um, I, I think if you were to do everything that the plan called for, it would probably be more expensive to do it that way. You wouldn't have the FTE count. But I think you're going to quickly clip so that you would pay for, uh, a couple of FTE. So.
Michael, I would, I would in, inject with another, uh, important role that, that economic development function serves as a leadership and kind of a, a flagship for all those other, uh, agencies. And that would be that leader to bring those together cohesively to move forward with those goals and objectives. That's a huge role that I see in an economic development person or function. Um, and on top of that, we, I, I know that Mr. Zuluaga, council member Zuluaga is a participant. We have this tourism grant that everyone's excited about and really taking hold of and moving forward from what the city manager has shared with me. I find it interesting that, that, that's, those two don't go together because they certainly do. So, um, that's a piece that I see as that leadership piece to bring the chamber along to, or, or even just kind of to make that cohesion to all move in the same direction.
And on a technicality, we wouldn't create a new department. They'd be under the city manager's office. They would report to me, um, which would also maybe make it a little bit more challenging if you have a consultant, but.
Yeah, it's not necessarily saying that we need to go to an consultant. I'm just sure. We're, we're talking about, you know, pay raises for the employees and all this. And then we're going to, we're going to, we're going to bring on, you know, more FTEs. And I just want to scrutinize that a little bit because you know, if you, you've got to make, sometimes you've got to make choices and you have to make efficiencies in your staff to, to make the mission happen. You know, I mean, I, I have to do it where I work and spend the better part of two months trying to figure that out. Um, so, so I know that's a tough job to do that, but, but if we're going to look at doing that kind of stuff, I want to make sure that we're not expanding, you know, the local government and then, but asking for more on top of that, you know.
Right. And then again, because it's coming from lodging tax, there's, as we just talked about, there's limited fungibility for those, those dollars coming from that fund. So we couldn't apply those same dollars to say, um, compensation for folks in the general fund or another planner, for example, sorry, Karen, um, or, or somebody else like another police officer, for example. So that would be limited, but I, I hear what you're saying. And it's, it's a fair question. Absolutely.
No, that's a good, good answer for that.
And I would just like to offer up an idea of, you know, kind of a compromise is a contract to hire. Because where you have them as a contractor and they start showing there is ROI. Then you bring them on full time. It, it would justify the FTE position, but going straight to an FTE, I've got to think about that one too. I'm with.
Kind of building on that, what, uh, what I see is, um, well, one, I think what I heard at the last, um, CML, there's like eight vacancies for um, economic development directors in the state of Colorado or maybe twelve. I don't know what it was, a bunch anyway. So are you going to be looking at a national outreach for this if you were to do it? Um, and that's just, I don't necessarily need an answer, was posing it, but back to what, um, David's saying. I, here's what I struggle with in terms of the budget and that is, we had six hundred thousand plus dollars uh, left over last year from positions that weren't filled. We seem to get along pretty well without those positions filled. I'm not saying perfectly, and I'm sure you can see which departments you had the greatest difficulties with, but my, but my, my suggestion is when you look at efficiencies, is there a way that if you're bringing on three and a half new FTEs, that there's three and a half other positions that we haven't had filled, that haven't needed to be filled. We've had a whole year go by with those not being filled. And you've survived. I mean, you've, you've got on with the job. So uh, as a way of balancing out and not growing the government, but growing it where we need it. And I do think economic development is a good area to grow it.
Yeah, I, I would say I, I'm glad that it seems fairly seamless because that's always our goal is you don't, you don't see service level impacts. Um, doing it every day, uh, I can tell you there's, there's absolute impacts. There's, um, you know, for example, overtime is something that we pay a great deal for because we only have so many people. And overtime, as you know, costs more than regular time. So we, we are actually paying more by not having folks in those positions. It's created a lot of strain on, on, on a number of our employees. So, you know, the, the community is growing. It's not growing quickly, but, uh, the, the city is, I, I would argue that it's not adding, wantonly adding lots and lots of positions, adding new programs. I think since I, I've been your city manager, this would be the first, what I consider like full of new programs, um, since I've been here. So, um, you know, that, that's always a consideration. Uh, the position that I was brought into the assistant city manager, when, after I became city manager last summer, um, we immediately converted that position into something we needed more urgently and that's worked out very nicely. Um, and so we've reclassed things and moved things around in the past. It, it's always something that we look at. We're always looking at okay, someone left, this position is vacant, could we do something more useful with it? So, um, it's, it is all, I would say it is something we always look at. It's not something we're sitting back on. I, um, in my previous job, I spent a lot of time thinking about efficiencies and uh, business process improvements and lean six sigma stuff. Would love to do that here. We've talked about it many, many times, especially Amy and I. Um, it's just, it's difficult when we're trying to keep the lights on, on a number of our crews. But it, it is always something we should be aiming for. In some places we have, other places we could probably do better, certainly. But, um, again, we haven't added too, too much, I would say. One of those positions, uh, is a GIS tech. And that is someone to help speed the development process along and make life easier for people out there in the community. Um, I think that the point five is to boost some of our part-time folks uh, in the planning department to help, to, again, to help move the building permit review process along more quickly. And then of course, the two economic development positions. So the economic development is new, certainly. The other, the other one and a half are kind of building on existing functions is I think I'm hearing from at least council member Otz. So it's, it's not, it is new positions, yes, but it's, we try and target it into areas that we think are going to move the needle for the community. Heard a lot about the planning and development process. Could use improvement, could use help. And so that's why we're doing those positions. I don't know if, if y'all have other thoughts or correct me.
Well, I want to probe this a little more because this is our, this is the budget time. This is when we allocate dollars to, to what your wish list is. And I want to go back to the appropriation we did, the supplemental we did at the end of a few months ago. And the, um, the comments when we had our last, uh, council budget discussions were about pay raises. You had a study done about pay raises and we were like. You had a study done about pay raises and we were like, well, uh, you know, we concluded there needed to be sixteen percent or something. Increase over a period of two years and it's like somebody outside decided that. And so we're all saying yes to it. You ended up proposing a seventeen percent and what was pretty, uh. Consensus about in council was performance. Well, we didn't see any, we, you came to us last month, whenever it was, six weeks ago, however long. And said you wanted the escalators and we haven't seen anything as a council. That the performance, uh, me- measurements have been put into place. So what I'm trying to say is that. We're, we're allocating you budget dollars for things that we haven't seen performance wise. And I like where you're going in terms of your, uh, economic development and, and what you're talking about with GIS, et cetera. But there's performance things on the other side that we haven't seen that they're actually, what we were concerned about is actually. Uh, dealt with. So what I'm suggesting to my colleagues here is. Perhaps what we look at is removing some of the positions and you can come back to us for a supplemental. If you need them later, if you want to put in three point five new FTEs, great. But then remove three point five from somewhere else. And if you come to us later in a year and go, you know what? We really need this one and this one filled. Then we haven't got to the point where continually adding to the budget on things that haven't been proven yet. I don't know if any of my colleagues are here where I'm going with that.
Um, i- i- if, if I could respond to that, um, first of all, I, I do take a little exception to the fact that this is my wish list. It absolutely is not.
Well, the city's wish list, yeah, sure.
Well, even that, saying it's a wish list, right? We, we have revenues that generally grow each year. And we have increased demands on our services as more people move in. We increasingly urbanize and there's more expectations. And so we, we are on the front lines interacting with folks every day and we are positioning. Those incremental revenue dollars to be in the place we believe they're best spent to better serve the people. And so, um, you know, this, I still haven't gotten my pony personally out of the budget. This is. This is stuff that, um, we need to continue doing, right? And in twenty twenty-three. A lot of its inflationary based adjustments, just like it was last year. It's just eating our lunch again. So you'll see a lot of what we're doing is just keep treading water, keeping pace, just like all of the rest of us are in our personal lives. And so we heard priorities from you all, uh, we heard, it, it was the majority of council about staffing and compensation back in May. We heard about economic developments and, and those things are not perhaps unanimous and that's okay. But these are the priorities that we've heard and we've, we've positioned the budget accordingly based on those priorities. It's not. Michael's wish list, it's not Kip or Suzanne's, it's things that we've heard. Um, going back to the compensation piece, I, I'm not entirely recollecting. Um, promising any particular performance. I remember talking about merits. We want to see something based on the employee's individual performance. I don't recall anything about. Um, the whole organization performing or meeting some benchmarks. I, I could be mistaken, but I don't, I don't remember that. Part of the compensation increase in twenty twenty-three is for merit. And if people don't perform, if they're on probation, they're not going to get that full amount of money. And so we responded, we heard council, we put that in there. And each supervisor is responsible for making sure that they distribute that merit accordingly.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Um, I, so I have.
Michael.
Done, I'm sorry.
Oh, I got more.
Go ahead. So I just have one last question here, um, on the reserve fund. I've had a lot of citizens asking me about this reserve fund and saw the emails from people asking. To have their funds returned to them and all of this kind of thing. So, um, you know, and I wanted to get that part debt paid off. So. What is a standard, a typical reserve fund that we should hold in reserve? And then how we measure that against what, what we've been holding in reserve?
And I will look at my finance director and then perhaps former finance director mayor Prossen case. Because I think they both have different pieces of that answer. So maybe Aaron, if you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely. So the council has agreed, I believe it's formally to have a seventeen percent reserve man, minimum. Um, with, because we have debt covenants, we should keep a minimum of seventeen to twenty percent. I would say especially with the amount we have for the aquatic center.
Okay, thank you.
I would, I would also agree with that. Um, Aaron, that was very well put. We never know and we have seen instances in the past, over the twenty-five years I've been involved. Where we were very grateful to have that reserve to lean on. Um, particularly in these inflationary times and we just don't know where our economy is headed. So, um, I would agree with that and I think twenty, that is absolutely a minimum.
So when you talked about the, uh, aquatic center, is there an allocation set aside in that reserve that specifically earmarked for? Uh, the accelerated pay down of the aquatic center?
Not at this time.
Yeah, because we have a penalty on paying that off early. So I don't think we can pay that off until a minimum of what, twenty twenty-six or something?
Three more years.
Yeah, yeah, that's a lot.
Right, the first, the first of twenty twenty-six.
The reason we're going to pay the park off is because we allocated funds to be put into the aquatic center pay down rapidly. We put it in a reserve for that. And we're paying off the park in advance because we can. So those, there, there has been a fun building of allocated funds for the aquatic center, uh, in the past and. I would suggest I'd like to see us continue to do that, including this year.
So are you asking for more than a seventeen percent reserve? No, he's saying keep stacking for the, to pay off the aquatic center.
Well, he said it's for the aquatic center. So I'm saying we could earmark some of those funds specifically for that.
And is that, that's the way it is now, right? We have earmarked funds in that for the aquatic center?
We don't at this time.
We don't? Okay.
We have a budget. We have a budget that is, is set aside according to our bond documents and our. Our schedule of payments. We, we appropriate for that every year. And that is the requirement that we have to pay that debt. I would say that I, I, sometimes we simplify our statements. This council has a budget before them that has a budget that says we're going to pay off the debt. We haven't approved appropriated funds yet. That is not a done deal. At this point, and we did set aside money over the last few years in savings to pay down debt. It wasn't a specific debt because we have more than one in the general fund. The council had an objective to pay down debt at an accelerated rate if we could do that. And so it has evolved and we have a budget that says we would like to pay off the park debt. Just to be specific, because this has not been approved yet. So thank you. I just want to make clear, we say things that are finite and definite that aren't necessarily that way yet. So please, council. Let's be careful about that. Because that's.
My understanding, you don't want to pay off the park with this twenty twenty-two?
That is not what I said. That is not what I said. That is not what I said.
Didn't say you said it, I asked you.
No, I didn't. I haven't, we haven't voted yet.
Okay.
Okay. It's still not definite until an ordinance is passed appropriating funds. This is a plan so far. Thank you.
So Aaron, uh, uh, back to the, uh, Jermaine topic of the, of the, uh, reserves. From what I read in your summary, you've got thirty, we have thirty percent in reserves. Which includes this amount to pay off the park. And then once that's paid down, that reserve is going to look like twenty-one or. Maybe by the end of twenty twenty-three, it's twenty-two, twenty-three point one percent or something. Is that correct?
Three, twenty-three. Assuming that the debt is paid off at the end of this year.
Right. So that's taking right now is a reserve of thirty percent, right?
That is correct. Right. That's what's projected for year end.
Correct. And then so we're gonna, we're, if, if we pass this budget, uh, January, you're going to pay off the park. And that's going to leave us a reserve of twenty-one percent.
Three point seven two.
Well, the projected budget will be twenty-three.
At the end of twenty twenty-two, it would be twenty-one percent. And then at the end of twenty-three.
Correct.
Twenty-three percent.
Twenty-one.
Correct, correct, okay. Can I answer your question?
Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Zuluaga, did you have anything further?
I do, I do. So Cindy Keating, sent in front of her, I am really struggling with the fact that last year I was just. Having a real hard time with a third of a million dollars in terms of debt for the, I'm sorry, operational debt for the park, the aquatic center. And this year it's four hundred and fifty-four thousand. How is it that we got an additional expense of a hundred and twenty-five thousand this year to operate? The pool. And can you detail that for me, please?
Sure, um, similar to any other business that's operating, it's just the increase in operating. Your business, but I can lay out a couple specific items for you as well. First one being every year, minimum wage is mandated to go up this year going into twenty twenty-three. It's eight point six. Eight percent increase for minimum wage. And I would say ninety, at least ninety percent of my staff at the aquatic center are minimum wage employees. So that is that impact there. Um, so and then our utility expenses, we're estimating between eight and eleven percent. Increase, um, coming up for twenty twenty-three. Our chemicals, um, we're seeing a minimum of a hundred percent increase in bleach alone. And that's not even, um, covering the cost of delivery. Because of the cost of the gas that needs to bring it up the hill for us. So it's increase of cost of doing business. Um, that's where those expenses, um, where you're going to see those increases, you're going to see. Um, in our safety, um, materials that we need to provide to our lifeguards. The cost to replenish their horns, their guard, their, all their safety equipment, all of that has increased as well. So that's where you're seeing those increases.
So how about on the, on the revenue side? You've got a real crackerjacks who's running the operation now and very creative and all of those pieces. What's our revenues looking like and what's the, because it's been a year, what sort of projects have you been able to implement and how much? Increase in revenues have we seen in the last twelve months?
Um, I don't have that specifically with me and in front of me, but I can tell you that we are incorporating. Of more community events. So we just had our pumpkin dive. Like I said, we've had, um, our Easter egg dive. We have some school bashes. We also. Are, have brought back the lifeguarding, um, course, which is actually a feeder into our pro, into our facility, which is a blessing. Um, we also have, we're partnering with some homeschool. Um, classes to come and use the facility. So we're just expanding our presence within the community. This year in twenty twenty-two, we did have an increase in our rates to enter the facility. Um, you don't see that increase in twenty twenty-three, um, because we just increased rates in twenty-two. Um, without knowing what the economy was going to be doing when we increased in twenty-two. So. You won't see a huge revenue increase some, but not like what the expenses are looking like because of just the cost of doing business.
What was the percentage increase in the admission fee?
Um, I don't have that with me right now, but I can get that to you.
Okay.
I can tell you. I'm not even going to guess, I'm sorry. I don't have it with me today. I would have, I have it in my office. I just don't have it with me here.
Right. I had a loss because. It's been increasing every year, the cost to run the aquatic center and some people love it. And I'm wondering how we can get more people to love it. So it could more offset and be a realistic, um, realit- contributor to why we like it, you know? Just to say we like and if people aren't putting their swim son, swim trunks on and going there, um.
I think our goal is exactly the same as yours. We want people to love our facility as well. We do, um, I can tell you that the staff that we have at our facility. Are a tight knit team and they all work very well together and they have a really good atmosphere. There where we actually, we don't have a staffing issue like many other communities have. Now I just jinxed myself and so I'm going to knock on some wood, um, because I, I, we're grateful for that. Uh, we do have community outreach. Is there always room for improvement on that? Absolutely.
Councilmember Connor's had a great idea. It can somebody on the staff do a cost, uh, projection of what it would cost to implement. Given out a couple of tickets every, I don't know, quarter, whatever with a water bill. So that you're seeding people actually getting interested in the pool.
Yeah, so I know a few meetings ago that was, um. Discussed briefly on providing free passes to residents a couple of times a year. Um, and so Brady and I had a short discussion on that and. Our cheapest rate to enter the facility is a youth or senior twenty punch pass. And this you buy annual, of course, that's the cheapest way to go in, but is like five dollars and some odd cents. And so if you take that times eight thousand dollars. Okay, I don't, haven't done my math in front of me right now, but that if everyone came and used that pass that one time for free. That would be an impact to our revenues.
Forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand.
Yeah, I think Frank, you were talking about something on like the water bill. So they have to prove, so they can't like.
Right.
Get passes in the mail and give them to the neighbor kids and the neighbor kids go to the pool for free ev- all year because everybody's getting free passes.
Yeah, I had that in notes that it'd be a, a resident, they'd have to show their water bill.
Yeah.
We are absolutely not opposed to that, but we just want you to understand what that, what that impact could be if everyone used it. Um, so your expenses would still be there because you would still need to be staffing. You still need to use your chemicals and, and so on. But then we would be giving. Up to forty-five thousand dollars away.
Worst case scenario.
Yeah.
Well, we're not opposed to trying that.
Okay.
Well, can I ask just a couple of things? All the things that you did during this past weekend. Did it cost you more to put those on or did you make money with the people coming in?
I can tell you that we had sponsorships. Because some of our events were free and some of them were not free.
Right.
And so we actually did make money on that. I don't have my total bottom line from that budget yet.
Okay, very good.
But it wa- I don't believe that it was, uh, uh, it was due to our sponsorships that we had from that event is the reason why we made money.
Yeah, that, that kind of bugs me actually, but no, that's good. I'm glad we have sponsors out, absolutely, but. It, it is disappointing that we're not self-sufficient at this point.
Well, you know. Well, we could charge a fee for all the events, but it has been, um, asked of us to do free community, community events as well. And so how we put on those free community events is by finding sponsors to help us support those for our community.
Oh, no, I a hundred percent understand.
And you know, Frank, I, I talked to Brady about this a while back and most pools actually operate at less of a recovery. Than even what he's, he's projecting. He's doing.
There are very few.
Yeah, they don't, they don't make money. Right, so I don't think we'll ever be in a position where we're making money on the.
But that's why, uh, when you're growing up as a kid, you had to be able to go to the pool for free. You shouldn't have to. Shouldn't crush a nickel to go. If you go to school here, you ought to be able to use that pool.
Nothing's free.
Oh, I know. Um, just before I move on to the next question I have, we're running out of time. I want to commend you on getting a U-Pass Cultural Center, uh. Generating some good revenues. So thank you for that.
Thank you, and I'll pass that on to the staff because that's.
Yeah, very good. So Kip, you're my, you're my next, uh, question I have here and that is. When I looked at the street improvements, uh, Browning to the highway, dual park, Pine Ridge, Bruce Spur and Lake. It didn't seem like the budget amount for roadworks and that amount came up to four point two million dollars. So can you kind of? Uh, clarify why it's such a high street payment amount when we were able to do Baldwin and Kelly for like. One point two.
Uh, so I have, um, an additional match to the highway sixty-seven project at four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Um, the street improvements that you mentioned, Browning, Dual Lake, Pine Ridge, um, that amounts to three point six. Uh, we also have additional crack seal and chip seal per the pavement management plan at three hundred thousand. And then a pavement management, uh, plan assessment of thirty thousand. They continue doing that assessment every year. And then also in there is the cemetery expansion at forty thousand dollars for the roads within cemetery that we want to expand our cemetery.
So sixty, I don't see the sixty-seven expansion, the six hundred and something you said.
Uh, the highway sixty-seven, it's a match. So, uh, Ben was able to secure, uh, significant grants. For that project, uh, with CDOT and that was, the quote was around one point two million. Um, and now the city's portion is around eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand and the rest will be picked up by CDOT. So it's all those projects into that one line.
Right, um, that's enough for now. Thanks. Yeah.
That, Councilmember Case, do you have any questions or comments?
That, Councilmember Case, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Um I just would like to, um on a different note, commend the staff for um all the great work they do with the lean staffing that they have in this organization. I, they work very hard, they're very committed and they really love this community. And I want to commend their hard work and let them know that what they do is appreciated. Michael, if you would share that and I would like that to go directly to you um and your department heads, because I know you do a great job managing. It is your job according to the charter. And um I think you do it quite well. The only question that I had, we already talked about earlier, I think this is a, a very great work plan. Uh just to remind the council, it's a plan, it's not cast in stone, it's based on projections and the best knowledge that we have today. And um what that looks like at the end of the year when we get financial statements and what this budget look likes, looks like will probably be quite different. Um but it is a good plan. I think you've thought of everything. You have covered the council's priorities, as you mentioned earlier, Michael. And um for that, I thank you. And I look forward to a productive year serving our citizens because that's what all this is. This isn't for us, this isn't for the staff, this is to facilitate the services that our community has come to enjoy and expect. So I just want to commend you and thank you for all your hard work and share that with your staff.
Thank you, Mayor Proton, we will.
Case, Michael or staff, do you guys, do you feel like you have direction? Do you have any questions? Any, any comments?
Um I think we need consensus on a few of the items that were discussed tonight so that we know for sure whether they should be included or not.
Okay, go ahead and do you want to start with the list of that?
So we have the signature events for fifteen thousand in the city council.
Council, do we have consensus for that?
No, no. Well, it looks like, so it's, it's, it's in the budget, so we'd want consensus to either move it or remove it altogether.
Yeah, I would like
It is currently in the city council budget and the general fund.
Yeah, so I would prefer to move it to economic development. I would agree with that, Catherine.
I prefer to see it go to the parks. Get the restoration of um of um Memorial Park.
Okay, so let's do this, consensus to move to Memorial Park?
No.
Can okay, consensus to move economic development?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's enough in economic development. I, I don't think it needs to go there personally.
How many do you?
We hear from the rest of the council, Mayor?
So I have I have David and Catherine for economic development and Kelly. So I've got three for economic development.
Right.
Oh, and Frank. So there is consensus then to move to economic development.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And, and if I
How, how do they want to move it?
That was going to be my next question.
Okay.
Um so economic development is located in the lodging tax fund.
Increase.
Is, is the council wishing for those dollars to be expended out of the lodging tax fund dollars? That would uh move it out of the general fund and into lodging tax, lodging, I think we have a lodging tax fund balanced right now. We do. Okay, so we would um I, what would we do, Aaron?
So currently, on your lodging tax payout, you have a thirty-five thousand dollar special events. Don't know what that's to, but
That, yeah.
That is a payout for twenty twenty, the end of this year.
So may I ask a quick question and maybe it answers the question is why do we still have twenty thousand dollars for the visitor's center? Since we don't seem to do anything with that.
We were hoping to bring it back at some point. We do use some of that um for promotional activities.
Okay.
But um the other is thirty-five thousand dollars is transferred out to the general fund, the council member Connor's question. And that's used for a, a number of different events and support. Um so it would, I mean, we, we, we can do whatever you want, we can, um I mean, we can find a way to make it work. To, here's somebody.
Maybe we add it to the special events line item of thirty-five, Michael. Um I know it's not balanced, but maybe that, you know, um that thirty-five for special events is fireworks for and then the July fourth events and things like that, correct?
That is correct.
Especially events that we have throughout the year.
So those that gave consensus. You chime in on where you'd like that fifteen thousand then?
Should I, could I offer a suggestion, Catherine and, and Frank? And uh those that current consensus is that maybe for, for now uh we leave it where it is with the goal of incorporating that into the economic development function.
No.
Yeah, that works for me.
I don't believe that you were in consensus, Robert.
I'm okay.
Thank you, Frank.
So now you're saying we're going to leave uh fifteen thousand in a special?
No, we'll, we'll leave it in the council budget for now and they
We'll leave it in the council budget.
Figure out.
Yeah, just take the label.
Take the label away.
Okay.
And we can, we can, they can figure out some, you know, they can come back with a suggestion. We don't have to we can eventually get rid of it if that's what we end up wanting to do too, so.
Put it back in the general.
Yeah, yeah, if you can keep it in the, the, the council's budget without the
Without the label, yes.
I, I would agree with that.
Maybe Michael has a suggestion.
With, so without the label, you don't want it labeled as special events in the council budget, but you want to leave the appropriation in there.
To economic development.
To economic.
Technically, develop. Oh, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Hillary. You're welcome. Is it transferred?
Uh Hillary, could you say, I'm sorry, ma'am? Well, if it's in the council budget, it, it won't need to be transferred.
Oh, I hear you. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Okay, so Aaron still has some questions that he needs clarification with and we're running short on time.
Yeah.
Do you have any other ideas?
We have, did we have more?
I think that was the only one that I was questioning.
Well, he tricked me. Okay. Okay, so
Mill levy.
What did you, oh.
What would you, what was your consensus?
Yeah, there was the mill levy item.
Temporary reduction.
My answer is no. My answer is no.
So there's four nos, so there, there it is. No consensus on the mill levy reduction at this time.
Thank you.
Aaron, is there anything further?
Not, not that I have, I'm for one point.
I, I didn't have any other options, so.
Okay, council, I'm going to go ahead and end this work session then and uh we'll reconvene at seven.
Mayor LaBarre? Yes, we're having internet problems, so we're not going to use civic clerk this evening. So don't even, you don't have to worry about voting, we'll do it manually. Okay, Kelly, did you catch that?
I did, and I will join you in the other link on Zoom for the council meeting.
Okay, great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.